Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Spokane City Council Study Session for February 11th. We have three significant items on our agenda today. We're going to hear from Phillips 66 about the Yellowstone Pipeline franchise agreement. I've provided lots of questions for them to answer for all of us in anticipation of considering their franchise agreement in the future. We're also going to hear a series of presentations on the Housing Action Plan, the first of which, a study session of which is, or maybe it's our second one, but we're going to continue that. And then, we're going to hear a first touch on draft Sustainability Action Plan from Cara Odegaard. So, with that, I am going to turn it over. I believe I've got Eli here from Phillips 66. And Eli, if you would like to introduce yourself and start your presentation. And council members, feel free to interrupt. We won't necessarily see your hand because we'll be sharing the screen, but feel free to interrupt with questions at any time. And then, once he's done, we'll invite questions and comments again as well. So, Eli, welcome to Spokane City Council.
Well, thank you very much. And I'll just give a brief introduction to myself and then Caroline Elias, and we'll take over here for a couple of slides. But, thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you today. We have a few people who are going to talk about a couple of different topics, some of our subject matter experts. But, my name is Eli Cleaver. I am with Phillips 66 Pipeline Company out of Billings, Montana. I'm the Region Manager for our Rockies region, our pipelines and terminals that are in kind of the Northern Rockies. And, here to talk today about our Yellowstone Pipeline, which is across Montana into Washington and the franchise agreement. So, hopefully you guys can hear me all right. Let me know if you can't. And Caroline, you want to kick this off from the first couple of slides? Caroline, are you able to listen or hear?
Is she on? Can you...
Well, I can go ahead and give just a little introduction here on this. So, Yellowstone Pipeline, just a quick overview. I spoke of it, if you can see the screen. It starts in Billings, Montana, goes across the state of Montana through Idaho into Washington. And it primarily serves the customers across Montana into eastern Washington, the half of Washington. And the source of refined product is pre-refineries in Billings. So, today, we're going to give kind of an overview specific to Washington, safety measures that we have for YPL Yellowstone Pipeline, some of our proactive risk mitigation, and then emergency response and remediation plans, capabilities, et cetera. And want to make sure that we're answering any direct questions from the audience as well. So, the slide that's up right now is the immediate vicinity in and around Spokane. The line, YPL, so just to be clear here, I'm saying YPL, that Yellowstone Pipeline will probably speak to it abbreviated as just YPL. The YPL was constructed and has been in operation since 1954. One of the things that we're definitely proud of is the safety and the operating history. And in Washington in particular, that's been stellar. We have no spills or other pipeline releases associated with Yellowstone Pipeline and its operating history. The lines coming in and a couple of lines that you would see on the screen here are 10-inch, and then there is an 8-inch line as well, but just to kind of give you a relative picture for the size. Yellowstone Pipeline delivers into kind of this market area and the eastern part of the state, a large percent of the pipeline total market share. The products are gasoline, diesel, both for road use and agriculture, and then jet fuel as well. And from an equivalent volume standpoint, what this keeps off of the highways annually is around 50,000 trucks. That would otherwise be there. The ownership, so Yellowstone Pipeline Company is owned by three other companies, and Phillips 66 is the operator. So, you can see the other owners here being ExxonMobil and Energy Transfer. Jumping into some of the safety measures, the first thing that I want to highlight here is just the overall Pipeline Integrity Program. So, the Pipeline Integrity Program is really a holistic program that covers a lot of things, and we'll get into a little bit more of that on some of the other risk mitigation factors. But, one of the big things that the Pipeline Integrity Program covers is the inline inspection of the pipe with smart tool technology. So, this is something that in the past 20 years became a technology that became available, and then it's been refined and improved in the subsequent years. And so, in the past five years, for the line coming into the Washington area, we have ran, on average, one tool a year, so five tools in the last five years. And these look for a variety of different things. There's geometry tools that look for dents or anything that may have caused the pipe to go out of round, damage from an external source. Magnetic flux leakage, which that's just the terminology, NFL, another term for it, but that looks for any metal loss, corrosion, a gouge, or something else that might have caused the pipe to be thinner in a spot. And that technology has improved to where it used to only be able to see larger areas to now it can see very, very small localized pits. And then ultrasonic. And ultrasonic covers a wide range of technologies, but ultimately what it's doing is, it can also measure for pipe wall thickness, but it's primarily being used today to look for cracks, cracks in the long section of the pipe or other crack-related defects. So, the important part here is not only just to use these tools to find things that may be areas of concern, but then to follow that up, to excavate them, to evaluate them in the ditch, and to make repairs as necessary. And we do that on any tool run, even if it comes back without showing anything of concern, we will always dig up a certain number of areas to validate that it's performing well and that it's not over or under calling. So, the picture here on the left is a tool that we actually pulled out of our Spokane facility. You can kind of see the length and just what that looks like. And so, for this next one, I'm going to hand this over to Michael Belaito, who works in our Control Center, to talk a little bit about the Control Center capabilities and how it works.
Yeah, thanks, Eli. There we go. I'm Michael Belaito. I'm the operating excellent supervisor here in our Pipeline Control Center, which is located in Bartlesville, Oklahoma. And my group within the Control Center is responsible for our controller training and leak detection programs, as well as our standard operating procedures and ensuring our operation is compliant with DOT FEMSA and state regulations. So, within our Control Center here in Bartlesville, we monitor and operate about 13,000 miles of pipeline spread across the US. And those pipeline assets are split across 17 operating consoles that we have here in our Control Center. And each one of those consoles has responsibility for a specific group of assets. And these, all these pipelines, including these Yellowstone Pipeline Company assets, are all monitored and operated 24/7 from our Control Center with the ability to remotely shut down and isolate any pipeline or pipeline segment at any time. So, our Control Center, it's pictured there on the right, is really state-of-the-art. It was designed to optimize our pipeline operation and reduce controller fatigue. And so, lots of design features included here, including stand desks. We have soft panel walls to reduce echo, have indirect lighting. You can see on this slide, the white clouds above each one of the consoles, and that helps reduce glare on the operating screens. We have independently controlled heating and air conditioning for each controller at their console. And the screens that they operate off of have been designed to clearly indicate to the controller what's most important at any given time. So, talking a little bit about our controller training program, before they can even operate on a console, they go through a six-month training program. And we cover standard general operations, as well as abnormal pipeline operation, hydraulics, leak detection. And this is where we really drive home our think leak philosophy. And what that means to us is that if there's any possible indication of a leak, ranging from somebody seeing or smelling something near our pipeline, to a leak alarm in our Control Center, don't second guess what that might be, just shut down, then verify the cause. As far as detecting leaks here within the Control Center, we use best available technology. It's real-time transient modeling, which, as the name would imply, runs in real-time and is monitored continuously by the controller with additional supporting staff with a lead controller that's always available on staff and our leak detection team. So, that's like our Control Center operation in a nutshell. And I'll turn it over to, I think, Clint for some additional safety measures.
So, my name's Clint Luby. I'm the Operations Superintendent for the Yellowstone System from Billings, Montana to Moses Lake, Washington. I'm just going to touch base on our public awareness program, give you some insight on that. So, we have a pretty robust program, which is in place for the safe operation and to prevent third-party damage to our pipelines. We obviously, hopefully you know what the 811 Call Before You Dig program is, that's operating around. You know, we have two dedicated personnel there in the Spokane area that are dedicated to just conducting one-call locates to protect the pipeline and the people around it. We also do contractor pipeline awareness banquets and agricultural expos in different cities or towns across the pipeline system. We sponsor and present at those to improve the pipeline awareness. So, we also make sure that our pipeline signs, line markings, right-of-way clearing, all that is up to date, so the locals, people are working around there, they know where our assets are. The right-of-way inspection, so we do both on-the-ground and line flying, where we have a fixed wing aircraft fly once a week, all of our lines. They're looking for anything from contractors working near it that might maybe not have a one-call in, or even either way, and then also anything abnormal around the pipeline from week to week. They communicate if anything they see to those pipeliners that are supporting that area, and those two guys will go out and address anything that needs immediate attention. We also do annual pipeline and terminal awareness, so different brochures, mailings that go out to, some of you may have received some of this, but it goes out to public-affected people, emergency officials, local public officials, and then different excavating companies that are in those areas. Those are sent out every year. And then, we also participate in the local LEPC meetings in all of the counties across the pipeline system. So, we attend those. That's a good place for us to create relationships with those people, and so we can work together in any, there was an event. We also have a very strict encroachment guidelines that the two pipeliners and our engineers work with developers, landowners, contractors that are doing any work around the pipeline to make sure that we're protecting our asset and anything they might be crossing this with or being near on the pipeline. We're also continually looking for different ways to improve on this awareness program. One of the most recent ones, and it's really the two pictures that you see on the screen. We did this in Spokane and Port Wayne area last fall, and we plan on doing it again as construction starts ramping up this spring. But, it's a pipeline geo-fencing initiative, and it kind of like the picture down there on the bottom kind of shows, we pick different areas. So, like, we pick a buffer. We chose a 500-foot buffer around the pipeline through that area, and then like the home improvement stores, city and county buildings, and heavy equipment rental companies. So, if you go into there and you're on your phone, it'll actually pop an impression up on your phone, similar to what you see on that picture. And then, it pops that up, and then you click on that on your phone, and it'll actually take you to our pipeline awareness website that talks about who we are, what we are, how we operate, emergency, all kinds of stuff there. This was a new program that we did, and we ran it for 30 days around the peak season for excavations near the pipeline. And it was pretty impressive. We had over 120,000 impressions that went out, where they actually, it popped up on them. And then, we actually got almost, just almost 1,000 clicks to where people actually went to our website from that. So, it was kind of a new program that we tried, and we're seeing some success with.
So, to build just a little bit on what Clint was talking about around, you know, looking for ways to continuously improve, I'm going to highlight a couple of things that I wanted to back up just a little bit. You know, our Washington safety history has been essentially perfect, and we're tremendously proud of that. The overall pipeline system, the last event of any significance was back in the 80s where there was a release, and that was a result of a third-party line strike, the installation of either a phone cable or an electric cable, I can't remember which. But, that's why we, that's one of the reasons why we put a big emphasis on the public awareness, but then the oversight for any time that there's a crossing, or if we see evidence that activity happened on the right-of-way and we didn't know about it, those are also things that we'll go investigate because history says, and experience has said, and industry events have said, that some of the more impactful things that can happen are those contacts from others that are unintended. So, the picture here is, it's kind of hard to see, but it is the, one of our crossings of the Clark Fork River in Montana on the western side of the state, and it's an aerial span. And it's views like this and things like this that we are ultra-protective of and remind us of all of the safety measures that we have and the value in placing those at utmost importance, just to protect the landscape and those that come to enjoy it. So, we talked a little bit about our Integrity Management Plan, and that covers a lot of things, some of the things that are on here, the Control Center monitoring. One thing that we have in these areas is geo-hazards, landslides, occasionally earthquakes, and so we have an assessment program for those. And largely, all of the things that I'm talking about here are advancements and continuous improvement ideas that have happened in the last couple of decades. So, even though we've had very good performance, we're not satisfied, and we know that there's always threats out there, and if we know about a threat, we need to do something about it. Depth of cover surveys, there can always be erosion that could expose the pipe, so we do those routinely. We do assessments to determine where we have valves or other devices that can shut down flow, and like what Michael talked about, the Control Center can monitor and shut those remotely. Our navigable waterways, we inspect those for any exposure of the pipe and debris or other things that may be observed. We do routine maintenance tinging, not just the smart tools, but other tinging inside the lines to keep them clean. Like this span you see here, we'll do drone inspections up close with certified contractors that can operate that and do inspections on the outside of the pipe in addition to the inside of the pipe inspections. Our block valves and right-of-ways are inspected. And one of the things that's around cracks and crack, kind of that whole philosophy is looking at how the line operates, pressure cycles. We monitor the pressure cycles up and down and look for potential pipe fatigue. The training and operator qualifications, a lot of that's internally driven, but then a lot of it is driven by regulation, FEMSA, the Pipeline Hazardous Materials Administration, that they're a governing body over us for training for employees that work on the pipeline. And then, we're always reviewing for changes to high-consequence areas as well, adding those into our database and making any changes or risk assessment changes. So, there's a wide variety of things that have had development, improvements, and enhancements kind of in that continuous safety improvement mindset over the past couple of decades. Just wanted to highlight that. So, doing this more so that the council can get a feel for us as an operator for what's important and that we don't just go out there and take these things lightly. So, one thing that's important for the Spokane area, and that's where we're saying, you know, this is even more recent, and something that I wanted to highlight for the council is, in the vicinity of Spokane, there are two river crossings, and this kind of just allows me a chance to highlight what we've been working on in the past eight years. So, there was another pipeline company in Montana that had a spill in the Yellowstone River. And if you Google that at all, we've done it, and we've seen where this spill's actually been attributed to our company, Yellowstone Pipeline Company, which is incorrect. It was in the Yellowstone River. But, what spun out of that is a program that we started to look at all of our river crossings and just make sure that we were managing them safely, and if we had areas that we needed to work on for improved safety, that we would do that. So, out of that program, we have 181 monitored crossings of the Yellowstone River, or of water crossings for this pipeline system, sorry. And then, we've had 57 mitigations to date. Most of those, or over half of them, have actually been replacing the crossings. So, if it was just a shallow crossing or trenched into the riverbed or laid down with river weights, that's not sufficient for today and for the risk that we're willing to accept, and frankly, that environment and the public don't deserve that. So, our stance has been to replace those. And we replaced them with HDD, horizontal directional drill technology. This has several advantages, obviously, for working in the river. You're not working in the water, not disturbing fish, other wildlife, making it muddy. But, you're getting well below a depth that could ever be touched by erosion or flood debris from, let's say, a tree or tree snag that could come down in a flood type condition. Small footprints on the two ends where you're doing the drilling, and it replaces the line with high-strength pipe. So, I mentioned there were two crossings in the Spokane area. One of them is a little bit upstream or back towards the Idaho side, just a few miles from Spokane, and we replaced that a couple of years ago. And so, the last one that we have in this program is one that's kind of within the city limits, and it's one that we're moving forward with as soon as we can get the franchise agreement in place. In part, that's because part of the right-of-way area we're working is governed by franchise agreement property. So, this is just an overhead view over in the top right of that proposed crossing and where we'll be drilling, or we would be proposed drilling. That could raise a few questions. We can take them now, I'll move on, but I'll give pauses a second there if anyone has a question.
This is Brian, and my question, I think that's kind of near the airport, and I know they had some questions about wanting to make sure that the pipeline was going to be underground so that no aircraft would crash into it and cause something. Is that, what's the plan on that?
So, I can actually go, well, let me ask you this. So, I can, I have a couple of slides to show kind of in and around where we're at there a little more specifically. What I can tell you, and we can go to that in the back if after we're finished, but what I can tell you is the pipe is all below ground. We have a valve setting today that is on either side of the river, and they're automated valves so that the pipeline can be, well, we can monitor pressure on either side, temperature, and we can shut down or close those valves from our remote control center. So, there's a little bit of equipment above ground. There's a vault, because it's a buried valve, and then there's a radio tower that allows that communication, but it's pretty short. I've got a picture of what that kind of looks like, and it's down the hill a little bit. We have been in communication with the airport authority, and that was kind of initiated last year around, I think in March, when, we had been under the impression that that was, you know, all kind of franchise, this area was all franchise-related, city-related communication, and they were directed that, oh, you know, on the south side of the river here, we need to work with the airport authority. So, we've been doing that for, or that was initiated about 11 months ago. And we're, right now, we're just kind of waiting to get this agreement in place before we further pursue and finalize kind of that design. So, I know it's been maybe a few months since we've talked to them, and definitely their concerns around any above-ground appurtenances understood relative to the airport. But, as it is today, we do have a vault that sticks up maybe a couple of feet off the ground. Would you, if you want to, I can go to those slides and show a picture of that.
No, I think that's, I think you've answered my main question, which is you're waiting for the city agreement before you re-initiated conversations with them. I think their main concern is they just hadn't heard from you for a while.
Okay.
So, yeah, continue on as far as I am. If other people have questions about this enhanced river crossing, which would come into play once the franchise agreement is there, go ahead and speak up. I'm not hearing any, so continue.
All right. And I've got a little more at the end, but I'm going to hand this over to Jared Angell, who is in our Emergency Response Group to cover a couple of topics. Clint, can you see if Jared's on, maybe just on mute?
He was on earlier, so maybe he's on mute. Let me ping him real.
Jared, can you hear us? Jared, can you hear us? Okay. If he's, I don't want to hold this up, so I'm going to cover this at a high level. If Jared, you never know, he covers our whole company, so maybe he got pulled into another phone call. But I'll cover this at a pretty high level, and I'll cover the details where I'm knowledgeable here. And if Jared hops on, he can fill in some gaps. So, what I'm going to speak of here a little bit is Phillips 66's capabilities as a whole, but then specifically also to Yellowstone Pipeline. We, and I say we, Phillips 66 has a very robust program for emergency response and for the drilling and equipment and deployment and evaluation of our capabilities in these scenarios.
Are you guys able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that, my WebEx settings were off. Good morning, my name is Jared Angel. I'm the emergency response team leader for Phillips 66 here in Houston, Texas. I'm going to discuss our emergency response program and what we provide to our operators there in the state of Washington and in your city. So, through our training and exercise program, we work to build emergency response coordination at all levels of government. Federal level with DOT, FEMA, in coastal areas, Coast Guard, and the EPA, with your State Department of Ecology and your local agencies, your county emergency managers, your fire departments, and local law enforcement. Our program starts off with a, with training, like every other. Our HazWAP training is our first step in ensuring that our first responders are safe during emergency response involving hazardous materials. This training teaches our first responders how to utilize protective equipment and read and utilize our emergency response plans and other tools like our safety data sheets. These skills enable our responders to safely manage the incident location. In addition to that, all of our trainers are certified by FEMA. So, we go through the federal government's process, and we train our local responders there on the incident command system and the National Incident Management System, which is the same emergency management system that your county and local responders utilize. To ensure that we keep our skills sharp, we run tabletop exercises. So, what these are essentially are group discussions, but in the state of Washington, they're much more than group discussions. Department of Ecology has higher standards than just a what-if discussion. They have us actually demonstrate our capabilities, and for every exercise that we conduct, they are on-site to ensure that if we state something in our emergency response plans, that we can actually deliver on it. And I'm proud to say that all of our emergency response exercises that we've run, we've demonstrated competency to the State Department of Ecology. If we have any lessons learned in those exercises, we take those lessons learned and we improve our program. We really focus on continual improvement, and we try to keep, document our best practices. And things are different in different parts of the country, so when we have our lessons learned even outside of your local area, we'll take those best practices and implement them within your city. On response equipment, you'll see on the slide, we've got a few pictures of some trailers in Moses Lake and at Spokane. We have our equipment. We've got 14 emergency responders there locally, and we can supplement them with contractors to utilize this equipment. And in the event we needed more equipment than these trailers, that you'll see the closest ones there, we've got trailers in the city, Kingston, Idaho, Moses Lake, and then we've got other equipment locations in the state of Montana. We also can plus up those numbers with our incident management support team. So, in the event we had to mount a large-scale response, we have over 100 company employees who are trained and ready to go in and manage the incident. Now, we practice this on a regular basis with your first responders there locally. I mentioned some of those contractors. You'll see some of their logos, MSRC, NRC, CTH, and others. In addition to our company-owned equipment, we've got pre-arranged contracts to bring in, from anywhere in the world, response equipment that we may need to address whatever emergency we're dealing with. The companies over to the right, CTH and GHD, they provide us with toxicologists and other abilities to do air and water monitoring during these events. So, next slide, please. So, I wanted to provide an example of the detail of planning that goes into ensuring that we're prepared. And here's an example of what's called a geographic response plan. These guide early actions when oil spills happen. Our GRPs are made up of pre-identified strategies for specific areas of the state at risk of oil spills. The strategies are designed to minimize our impacts to sensitive environmental, cultural, and economic resources. The state legislature in Washington directs Ecology to develop and routinely update these plans. Phillips 66 works hand-in-hand with Department of Ecology in ensuring these plans work and are up-to-date. This example here on the slide is for River Mile 80, which is near the Upriver Dam. And some of what this geographic response plan contains is that it pertains to the objectives and strategies outlined in the plan. How to implement this plan, it identifies a staging area of where we're going to bring equipment. It addresses the concerns in the area for site safety. We've got some field notes, and I wanted to point out in these field notes, you'll see that in this case, it directs us to communicate with the dam. So, that way, we bring all the involved stakeholders in this area into the loop of how we're going to respond. It identifies our resources at risk that we need to protect, recommended equipment and personnel it will take to do the job, additional site contact information, addresses that we can give first responders and others so they can find these sometimes remote locations, and the maps with all the details, boat ramps, where to place equipment, and other information like pictures of the area. And that's our emergency response program.
All right. So, I'm going to close with the prepared items, and then we'll have a little time for questions. I know we're running close on our time here. So, we'd be remiss if we didn't mention, you know, while we have all of the safety measures and robust plans and improvements and proactive measures that we all talked about, it's important, just like what Jared mentioned, to be able to manage that unpredictable, unanticipated event in the unlikely scenario that it happens. And along with that is remediation. I know that's a concern of folks that they would have. If something did happen, what is the plan, what's going to happen? And we do have a, we have a full remediation group within our Health, Safety, and Environmental Group at Phillips 66. And there's a lot with the aquifer that's a little bit unique and also very dynamic. And our plan at a high level is, as part of our emergency response plan, which goes in line with what Jared covered, we have all of the contact information and locations of all of the water intake sources and contact information. So, you know, if there's an event that happens, we're making phone calls immediately in that for closing any potential impacted water intake sources, any potential at all. And then, that follows up with very rigorous testing, monitoring, modeling, involving contractor resources that we know of and are aware of that can help with those efforts. And aggressive remediation, no matter what that scenario is, to ultimately return those water sources back to normal, completely safe. So, just wanted to make mention of that, that we have those programs and capabilities as well. And with that, we've used a little over 30 minutes here. I'm going to open it up for any questions that you guys may have.
Any council members? Just go ahead and volunteer if you have one. I have a couple, but let other people go first. So, I have a couple of questions. One, what's the, you know, assume a kind of a catastrophic spill in the river, how long till there are containment booms strung out trying to contain it from continuing to go downriver? And then, how far would the oil likely, or excuse me, the gasoline or jet fuel be down the river before those booms could be there? I get that it would depend on the time of year, what the river flow is, but just high elevation ballpark, what would we expect in a bad situation?
So, our emergency response plan has outlined along the river, a number of locations where we have access and also some modeling of distances that would go. And so, those are somewhat predicated upon a scenario where you know where that release point is, like a valve site, for instance. And so, our response capability, we have personnel that are within minutes of the facility, and we have the equipment that's always ready to go. So, those trailers, we've got vehicles on-site capable of pulling them, and they're ready to go at a moment's notice. So, when we've had unannounced drills that have come up where regulators show up and give us a scenario, they time us, and I mean, it's going to be, depending on if we have somebody at the site at that moment, or if they have to, you know, drive a few miles from where they live to the site, it's going to vary a little bit. But it's a very short response time. We have, I'm spitballing here a little bit, but I think it's 30 minutes to an hour to have the equipment like at the site and then, you know, be collecting liquid with all your equipment strung out. And so, we have anchor points pre-identified and established to speed that up. And that's really, really phenomenal. They challenge us every drill that they do to try to get faster. And we learn from that and find areas to improve, you know, anytime that we do those activities.
How?
The distance downstream, sorry.
Nope, that's my question, I was just following up. Keep going. What did you say?
Council President?
Yeah.
Back to you. So, have you shared your emergency response plan with the city and other local entities for us to review with our emergency management group?
Jared, Jared, you want to take that? You've got the specifics of that better than I do.
Yes. So, our emergency response plans are submitted to the State Department of Ecology, and I'm going to start at a high level and work my way down. But we have to submit these for government review and approval. Once these plans are reviewed and approved, we also work with the local responders. We've got a portal through our public awareness program that was discussed where we communicate with those first responders to ensure that they have access to our plans. We also, through our exercise program, ensure that your first responders are participating with us in our exercises on how to activate these plans and mount these responses, to have those discussions, sure that we're all on the same page in utilizing the management, incident management system, and getting that boom and that equipment into the river if needed.
And Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do verify that the fire department is the main group there, so we don't have multiple plans around there. The main group that we ensure has the plan, and others can get it from them, right?
Correct. We've got a list of first responders, and our plans also have a, I haven't looked at the distribution list, but we've got a record of everyone that that plan's been distributed to, located within that plan. So, that way, we can ensure that we know who's got it.
And I'm sure you told me, and I didn't catch it, the review, the frequency of review of these plans are how often or does it ongoing?
These plans are reviewed annually.
I would just say, it would be great if offline, you just sent us maybe the last time you did a drill slash tabletop exercise on a river spill, and, you know, how long did it take to get people there? How far was the, you know, virtual spill downstream before it started to be arrested? Things like that. So, but rather than us try to sort through all of it, if you could give us maybe just a quick summary of that, I think that would be super helpful.
Sure.
I, one other question on your remediation, I think the drinking water issue has been front of mind for a lot of council members, especially since one of our wells is super close to the pipeline. So, I understood the prompt shutting down of the intakes into our drinking water system. But I guess our next question is, how are we going to replace that water while the remediation is going on? I'm just wondering if there's anything in the plan about how to do that. And again, you may not know the depths of the plan as you sit here today, but again, something you could maybe forward us, I mean, tell us what you know today, but if you have something, it'd be helpful to see what the plan is. Because I think our dependence on the aquifer for so many hundreds of thousands of people is top of mind for us.
So, at a high level, and, you know, the way that we would participate in a situation like that is, we're going to work alongside the local communities and the first responders and the affected people and take care of them appropriately, make sure that they have the drinking water and clean water that they need. And so, I think it's, I would be speaking a little bit beyond my knowledge level to know the ins and outs of the aquifer and how many intake sources there are and what the effect of one of those is on the water supply to the area. But I know that's been looked at, and I think it may be worth mentioning that part of the franchise agreement overall is to, for Whitefield to help jointly fund a vulnerability study, that may shed a little bit more light on that. So, some further research and development to enhance that a bit more. The response plan itself, yeah, it's 1,100, 1,400 pages long. So, we can build into that a little bit more and provide you some specific follow-up, Brian.
That'd be great. And, yeah, and I understand you're not going to have each page memorized. So, but that would be good. So, yeah, so to, just to summarize on getting back to us, one would be the drinking water replacement plan. And then, I think you already mentioned, you could come up with from tabletop and exercises, how far downstream and how quick the booms are out, containment booms are out there, just from the last time that you looked at that. And if someone could just summarize it for us a little bit, maybe with a little bit of source data, that'd be good. So, this is super helpful. I've had very productive meetings with you offline as well, so thank you and your team for that. Any other questions from council members at this time? Okay, great. Thanks, everyone. And for anyone watching on the public, we've continued to defer this for a while while we're getting this information. And we'll be, a few council members who've been most interested will be huddling to figure out some next steps and get back to the rest of council and everybody else. But with that, let's move to, we're going to have up to 20 minutes from the Housing Action Plan.
Going to, there we go. Steel the screen sharing. Let's see, I guess, good afternoon. Are we there yet? Almost. Council President and council members, those tuning in, my name is Maureen Murphy, and I'm a planner here with the city. I am happy to join you today to talk about the Housing Action Plan and give an update on the project as we begin talking about potential priorities and strategies. And as Council President mentioned at the beginning of this, this is the first study session focused And as Council President mentioned at the beginning of this, this is the first study session focusing on draft priorities and strategies. So I know everyone is really eager to jump in and we look forward to engaging in the conversation. I'm going to do a brief overview and then we can hopefully discuss the first priority today. And I will be back weekly, at least through February, to get through all the priorities. So to start, the city of Spokane is creating the housing action plan to help increase housing options and support housing needs for more people and families of all incomes. We know that housing affordability is a challenge, though it's not necessarily felt equally. And many households are struggling with the legacy of housing barriers and inequalities and also with the current context of the pandemic. So we know this is an urgent conversation and also something that the city has been working on with different initiatives over the years. I do want to quickly touch on the connection with the housing action plan and the comprehensive plan, which that's long-term vision for the city. So the housing action plan can help inform our housing land use and other policies outlined in the comprehensive plan. And it can then further guide implementation of those policies by identifying strategies that will help encourage housing development that will better meet our goals. So the main thing is that the housing action plan is a guidance document and it does not change the comprehensive plan directly. But each strategy will have additional public discussion as it is implemented over time. So much like the housing action plan, the housing vision in the comprehensive plan in the housing chapter calls for affordable housing of all types that is safe, clean, and healthy. We have two housing goals and then a number of policies within these. But I just wanted to highlight the goals really quick because they do match very closely to what we're actually talking about with the housing action plan. So there's one on housing choice and diversity and then one on housing quality that also talks about preservation of our current housing stock. And the housing chapter also recognizes that neighborhoods do change and adapt over time. So that's really important as we talk about how to promote housing diversity and affordability going forward.
Maren, this is Brian.
Yes.
Just a quick question. In terms of those goals, how they're currently interpreted, is that, is there supposed to be housing of all affordability in every neighborhood in the city? Or are we just trying to average out across neighborhoods?
It's a really good question. And the goals, so there's the goals and then there's policies and then there's some discussion around that. And there is some discussion about trying to achieve housing options and diversity in all neighborhoods. It's not necessarily in the goal language, but that framework is discussed in the housing chapter.
Thanks.
So just a brief look at our timeline. We have been here a couple of times sharing updates throughout the process, including on housing needs, our data collection, and our ongoing community engagement. We are beginning discussions around the draft strategies and policy solutions and going through a series of workshops or study sessions with both the city council and plan commission. So we will continue to engage our working group that we have, our community working group, as well as identify opportunities for more public discussion. And then ultimately, we will be bringing a draft plan through plan commission and back to city council in just a few short weeks to a couple of months here. So kind of coming into the final stretch. So as I shared, we're going to talk more about the draft priorities and potential strategies. And again, we'll be back to go through all of them throughout the course of the next couple of weeks. As we do talk about priorities and strategies, I wanted to give a brief overview of a draft organization in the plan and how things are nested. This isn't necessarily a full outline. It's just kind of how priorities and strategies are connected. So our priorities are overarching theme. And then each priority will have a number of strategies. And these are identified through review of previous initiatives, our housing needs and data, policy review, engagement, as well as through the guidance we've received from the Washington Department of Commerce. And then the strategy, each strategy will have a narrative that gives a lot more context to it and then suggested actions. So again, it's a guidance document. So we want to provide options that the city could take to further it, but it's not necessarily making those actions with the plan itself at this time. But what we'll talk about today is high level and we'll continue to build out with more details as we get input and feedback and move towards the draft plan. But I just wanted to go over some of that terminology. So today we're going to be focusing on the priority level and then the strategies. And then just some things to keep in mind, there are a number of different ways that we can begin to categorize strategies and look at for the impact of the different strategies. We, if anyone was watching the plan commission meeting yesterday, we kind of shared a little bit about this, but decided that it's not fully baked. So we're going to keep it, again, a little bit more high level, hopefully focus on the actual strategies, but wanted to just put this out there as some different ways that we might consider the impact of them in the draft plan. Things looking at policy actions required, level of impact on units created, scope, timeline, resources required, partnerships, things like that, that could really give, help illuminate the impact of the strategy. So we've shared this before and we've been continuing to refine it. So we're down to about four overarching priorities. And again, these have been identified through review of our previous initiatives, analysis of the housing needs. A lot came from the roundtables we hosted in September with stakeholders, input from the surveys that we've been doing. So really trying to look at where, how we might group some of these at a very high level. So the first one today, we'll be focusing on is increasing the housing supply to, and expanding housing options to create more homes for more people. Pretty straightforward. And from our data analysis, we know that Spokane's housing has been predominantly single-family and also, sorry, single-family detached, I should say, and also older housing stock. And the graph on this top right shows that housing development fluctuates over time, which is normal. And we've seen a growing diversity in housing options over the last couple of decades. The blue here is that single-family detached. So you can see that it's still remained fairly consistent as a high proportion of our housing development. And then something that's been sort of interesting conversation is that we've seen some changes in our household sizes over the last couple of years to decade. And we know that not everyone needs the same type of house. So how can we again, look at increasing both the supply as well as expanding those options? And I should say that that's from our draft needs assessment. So there's more data there. I also pulled this out from our draft needs assessment that considers the different types of housing generally affordable to different household incomes and what is available in our current housing stock. So we can look at, are we reaching the whole spectrum if we're building predominantly one type of housing? What, you know, what incomes, what households can afford, what, and how that might relate with housing types? So that's a really integral part of what we're looking at and the guidance that we're getting from Commerce as far as how to think about housing options in this plan. So I'm going to do something a little bit differently. Again, if anyone was watching the plan commission meeting yesterday, but I wanted to take a minute to kind of go through them, high level, one at a time, and then hopefully get feedback. If people want to interject, that's totally fine. If you want them, I'll just kind of keep talking until I hear someone yelling. But the first one, looking at leveraging infrastructure and investment in a lot of our core focus areas. So the centers and corridors is a focused growth strategy that we have in the comprehensive plan. And that helps focus commercial residential, more high-density growth in those areas. And so we have a lot of capacity, both in centers and corridors, as well as some of our targeted investment areas in the downtown core. But we're really, we're not seeing that capacity being fulfilled at this time. So how can we further encourage that? So there's a couple of ideas there. And again, this is high level and we're very open to input and feedback. And so just kind of throwing a few of those out as examples.
Hey, Mary.
Yes.
On that, so just as an example, in the Northeast PDA, I think there's a desire to allow for a lot more mixed-use residential, commercial, but the heavy industrial makes that prohibitive. I mean, we have to do a big comp plan change. So I think looking at how we can modify zoning in the PDAs as simply and as time expediently as we can is another really important one that should be on that list.
Awesome. Thank you. So here's just that map of the centers and corridors. Any other thoughts or feedback around this one?
I just wondered, so far in your surveying, what are you hearing about why we haven't gotten more housing in centers and corridors? And maybe it's the three things that you said, density, heights, and parking. But have you heard anything else of why people aren't developing there?
Yeah. So I think there's a lot of input we've gotten from the roundtables and the surveys that we're going through. And I think that, you know, that's just one of the conversations that we've been trying to build with the developers and some of our stakeholders. You know, code has come up a lot as one way that if we could address that, that might help loosen some things. And so that's where some of these are coming out of. We have been working on some code amendments over the years. And, you know, on our, on the city's part, hasn't seen a lot of additional growth. And so maybe there's ways that we can further promote, you know, communicate, educate, promote those. When we've been doing some of those changes, we haven't necessarily been making them easily understood or, you know, really been promoting them. And so I think that that's an opportunity that we could also further.
We have to adjust parking requirements on there. And we're starting to see actually some interest in, we haven't in the past, but we're starting to see interest in development actually providing less parking. And some of that may be even pushing below what we require on centers and corridors, especially along our higher performance transit lines. That's one area we can, you know, along Hamilton Street, for example, you have seen housing going in along that center. But we're seeing some interest maybe in dropping the parking requirements entirely. So that'll be a discussion point going forward.
Lori, Councilman Brooks is here. There's very little south of the freeway that centers and corridors. So is that circling back around to zoning changes issues? What is that barrier there that, that part of the city is really not falling into a lot of the centers and corridors dynamics?
Yeah, I might invite maybe Louis, has a little bit more history on that.
Yeah, the original set of centers and corridors, and they have been expanded over time, were focused around the historic existing infrastructure, oftentimes along the trolley system that adds a Main Street-type atmosphere and had the bones to continue to develop in a more dense fashion and capacity there. So it's really just based on our historic land use and trolley system pattern. There could be more opportunities. Some additional centers have been discussed south of the freeway and just haven't materialized at this point.
This is Lori. Could I add something there, Louis? We have, I think we have quite a few. We have Lincoln Heights, we have Manitow. We have South Perry. We have the 14th, around 14th and Grand. But I wanted to add that what we're not doing anymore is offering incentives as we did early on. And I mentioned this yesterday at plan commission, incentives such as infrastructure, providing grants to upgrade infrastructure for people, developers who are willing to take on rehabbing an older building. And I think that needs to be explored and how we can bring that program back, number one. And number two, build on it so that we have other incentives in place for developers and business owners to build on centers and corridors.
Yeah, that downtown urban utility extension did help bring a couple of upper floors back to life in the downtown area. So looking at expanding that citywide would be a powerful tool.
And that gets into our next one on rising and updating development regulations and incentives. And so this one, the first, the first 1.1 is a little bit more targeted. And then the second one is a little bit more city-wide. And so a couple of ideas there, similar ones that we just talked about as well. Next one, 1.3, looking more at the special dwelling unit standard. We know that there's a lot of active conversation currently in the city and a high priority on a number of, on a number of lists. So we are highlighting these efforts as one way to achieve housing options. And we do have, you know, one way, again, is kind of the marketing. And Seattle has a really easy to use sort of ADU toolkit. And so we've been exploring visuals at the city here as a way also. But then there are more of those, some code changes that could potentially happen or filter into comp plan changes as well.
As we continue to push ADU and some of these other tools, such as our pocket residential tool that was heavily modified in the beginning of 2019 and allowing for additional cottages, the zoning code, development code's starting to run into issues with fire and building codes. And those are other areas that we're going to need to continue to explore to help facilitate these other alternative styles. Otherwise, yeah, sometimes they can be prohibited by other codes. It's not all just the zoning code.
Okay, let's see. Next one, explore the housing types and density allowed in zoning districts, including single-family residential areas. As I talked about earlier, this is one of the key focuses of the action plan. Or one of the key focuses is to promote greater housing diversity, affordability, and access to opportunity. And so that's not the only focus, but that is one of the ways. And so relooking back at our zoning and talking about that has been one thing that city, other cities have done. And that's certainly something that the Department, Washington Department of Commerce is outlining as a potential option for cities in this process. And that's also a focus, as I shared about, in the housing policies and the comprehensive plan too. And we've heard from stakeholders in the working group as well as in the community survey about expanding housing options and how that would hopefully alleviate some pressures and allow people the choice to find housing that meets their needs where they would like to live.
Maren, the first one there, that duplex on corner lots, is that there because you think it's easy? Just because it's so very narrowly tailored? Or is that there because there's some data that suggests that that will create a lot of housing?
That, so yeah, so this is where some of the guidance from Commerce is coming in. And that one was specifically called out as an option. The Department of Commerce has sort of a range, I would say, from something like duplex on corner lots to duplexes everywhere, triplexes. And so it's really trying to figure out what is, what would work for our city and that's sort of a low, a low-level range to kind of begin the discussion. But understanding what that, you know, what that could look like for the city. You know, Seattle has gone up to a much higher level, or sorry, Portland. You know, they have a big city, different context. So what does that look like for Spokane?
I just think that that's so narrow, you'll be dependent upon redevelopment of corner lots around the city to add that, those housing units. And I would much rather we look at things like, you know, FAR reform or density reform or zoning reform. I mean, something that's going to be substantial and actually get us some housing quickly.
Yeah, yeah. And so again, we would consider multiple actions to help further that. That was an example of one. But I think what you're talking about is also included in a lot of the guidance that we have too. So this is just a current zoning and allowed housing types. And so again, looking back at what we have currently and how we could potentially discuss that as part of code changes. And then of course, there's the missing middle housing type discussion. And so And so that's where we start getting into, you know, expanding what could be allowed. And a lot of these images are from Spokane, some are, I pulled some other areas that we don't have as much of. But, you know, 9% of our housing in the city is attached, single-family, and then another 20% is apartments and condos. And a lot of those, the attached housing was built sort of in the mid-20th century, and then the apartments and condos have been built a lot more recently. But how can we continue to further those? And so the next one, more about the utility and transportation investment specifically. And so we talked a little bit about that as some incentives. And we have seen, oh, sorry, I skipped 1.5. Okay, so that one. Mixed-use vibrant walkable neighborhoods with amenities and small-scale commercial. Again, this is something that we've heard a lot from stakeholders on interest in, you know, providing that walkable neighborhood, providing, you know, the corner place to get to a coffee or something, things that people are looking for to get out in their neighborhood and as one incentive that might, that developers might be interested in and would add to quality of life.
Maren, on your other PowerPoint, you had this as a low impact. And I'm wondering, what was the reason why you would identify this as low impact?
This one?
The vibrant, yeah.
Um, I think that, because it's dealing more with the, the commercial side. And so, you know, as an incentive for housing, it's, it's not necessarily the direct housing units, but sort of a tangential incentive that hopefully would encourage housing.
Because I guess I would, in my mind, I mean, creating these vibrant walkable neighborhoods where you've got neighborhood retail and you can build, again, to density around the neighborhood retail, I think you're going to find that that's going to probably create quite a bit of housing over, over time.
Yeah, I was just going to add on, Maren. I keep thinking about more mixed use and some perhaps higher height issues on major arterials with good bus service. That so on the blocks facing the arterial, you allow quite a bit more, and then you transition as you go into the neighborhood off of that block into maybe duplexes and then single-family on the block face on the opposite side of that block finally. So I just think if you, if you add the businesses and some higher-density housing, same as Michael's saying, then you have enough business to support those businesses. And if you just have a old house that's a business on the street and not enough people living in that area, it's going to be hard to make it go.
Okay, I know we're over, so I'll just kind of click through this one. We talked a little bit about it. You know, we have seen the development related to utility and infrastructure improvements across the city. So, you know, we know this is one, one key focus that we can continue to work on. And then the last one, just considering permitting process changes as necessary. So more of that internal, how can we look at our own processes?
Yeah. Well, great. Other questions or comments from any councilmembers? I think this is a nice bite-size program for us, and we'll look forward to future ones and your work. I just, again, continue to be quite happy with the progress that you're making on it. So keep, keep working, keep coming back to us, and we'll see you next week, same place, same time. Thanks.
Yep, and we'll talk, I was going to say, we'll talk about the second priority, more around affordable housing.
Yeah, great.
We were calling this the fun size. Each one of these is a fun size.
Okay, nice, nice. Public policy fun size. Excellent. All right, so we're going to transition to a discussion on the Sustainability Action Plan. A first touch, again, just a reminder, the city passed some ordinances around renewable electricity and greenhouse gas emissions. The state has since followed up on that with some legal requirements. And so we have a Sustainability Action Subcommittee that's working to implement those legal requirements in what I call Spokane-style, that really fits our unique needs and values and on-the-ground situation. So I would love to invite Cara Odegaard to present with us today. Cara?
Great. Thank you, Council President. I always appreciate Maren's presentations. She does such a wonderful job using visual elements. So a prize to anyone who can pick out the one element in my presentation that I stole from hers yesterday at the Plan Commission. Yes, I am here today to give you a preview of the upcoming update, or the draft update to the Sustainability Action Plan. As you, our Council President nicely queued us up, we are, have been asked, or the Sustainability Action Subcommittee has been asked to take a look at the existing 2009 Sustainability Action Plan and update it to meet some specific state and local goals that have been passed over the last three years. So I won't get too deep into those goals, but, because Brian did mention them, but they do require us to meet some more ambitious greenhouse gas reduction targets and renewable energy targets. I just wanted to take a moment here to let you know the depth and breadth of the process that we've been working on over the past two years. We've had, over the last two years, the Sustainability Action Subcommittee has had over 50 citizens, stakeholders as members, and even more council staff involvement in the nine workgroups that our Subcommittee is divided into. And we've heard from over 1,000 people from the community, including 1,400 people from our, our sustainability survey that we sent out last year. So a lot of work has gone into this. Our goal really, or our plan here is really focusing on these three overarching goals. We want to ensure that the actions we take are building resiliency in our neighborhoods and our community and ensuring a strong local economy. We have targets set to reduce greenhouse gas emissions that align with the state emission requirements, which means it's a step approach over the next 30 years that would lead us to a net neutral carbon emissions by 2050 and an actual reduction of 95%. And we are also looking at the strategies in our, in our plan closely to prioritize those communities that we feel will be most impacted by climate change or really any type of challenge that presents, is presented to our community. And we're looking at, just to give you an idea, we are looking at taking action in these seven, across these seven sectors. So you can see there's a mix of energy, transportation, land use, and the natural ecosystems of our water resources, our natural environment. And we do spend a little bit of time talking about human health and well-being and economic prosperity in the plan. As we were evaluating the actions and strategies that make up the bulk of the plan, we looked at two criteria. The potential for greenhouse gas reduction and the co-benefit that that particular activity would provide to our community. And the co-benefits that we were looking at are these four that I've listed here. So you can see it's really a broad approach to ensuring resiliency in our community. The elements of our plan, so this is what you will see when you get a copy of the draft plan, you'll see, as I mentioned, the seven sectors are divided into chapters. And in each of those sectors, we've identified broader goals, strategies, and actions that work towards accomplishing those strategies and goals that are laid out. We've got a, we got specific where we could, where we were able, and we've left room for broader strategies that will take more time to develop. So you're going to see a mix of quick actions that we can take right away and other actions that will require more time to develop. And we were very intentional about looking at partnerships to help us accomplish these goals. We realized that a lot of this, a lot of work is already happening across the community. And where we saw an opportunity for partnerships, we really tried to leverage those existing and hopefully new partnerships that can be created along the way. So a few, well, there are two items that I wanted to call your attention to that you will not see called out in the, in the first draft. The first one is the financial analysis that's being done by Gonzaga School of Business, and their students are working on that. It should be complete sometime around May. And the other piece here, it's not that we haven't been considering the comp plan, we have, we've been very intentional about that. But that, the callouts of the comp plan chapters are going to come during the next draft of the plan. That might change. I might be able to get that in next week, I'm not sure yet. So I'm working on it. And then lastly, this is, this is my last slide, I just wanted to give you an idea of what our timeline is looking like here. So we're still in phase one, we're working with internal stakeholders to finalize the draft. And once we have a council-approved draft that's ready for public engagement, our team has developed a very, well, we think it's a pretty robust public engagement period that's going to last for approximately six months. So that will be phase two through August, so March through August, and we hope to bring a finalized version of our draft plan to council for council action in September. And really, our goal with this first plan here is to make sure that our community and, make sure that the city and the community and everybody interested in this work is really walking in the same direction. So I'll stop there and ask if there are any questions and may have to answer. Otherwise, you'll, you'll be seeing this very soon.
Hey, Cara?
Yes?
I'm just wondering, in terms of the public engagement process, how, how are you guys going to get this material into folks' hands? Is it going to be emailed out to social media? Is there going to be more of a proactive way of getting it out to folks? Just kind of curious.
Yeah. No, great question. Yes, we, yes to all of the above. We will have a copy of the plan available on our website for people to read on their, at their own pace. We've also developed what we're calling a meeting-in-a-box approach after speaking with Maren, actually, a few months ago. She helped us, talked to us a little bit about that. And we've been working with our communication team and Lisa to help develop a set of materials that will include a presentation, a script, and a feedback form for anybody who's interested in hosting their own virtual meeting, so they'll be able to present the information to a group of their peers. We're also going to be conducting three workshops, similar to the water resource workshops that we've just conducted, that will be, you know, part education and part discussion so that we can, in real time, sit down with members of the community that are interested and have a conversation, take notes, and gather their feedback. And we're open to any other suggestions as well.
I appreciate that. And then my other question, just where are you guys at in terms of, of the concept that I had shared with you regarding kind of measuring the CO2 equivalent and looking at a lot of options in terms of reduction of CO2 and make sure we're doing the most cost-effective form of reduction possible?
So you, what I recall, our conversation was about conducting the cost analysis associated with some of our recommendations. And we, that's where we asked Gonzaga to come in and help us identify some of that. As I mentioned, some of our actions are very specific, and those are easier to measure. Some of them are more aspirational strategic partnerships, and so there's not so much of a price tag that we can evaluate at this time. So I'm asking you to stay tuned until May, when we can hear back from the Gonzaga students.
Well, I guess my, my only argument in that is just that if we know in advance we have to reduce X, and we know exactly what the cost is of the whole menu of options, we can pick the least expensive options to mitigate in order to preserve taxpayer dollars. So, and, and hopefully preserve jobs. So anyway, that's my thought, just put that out there.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I think a lot of those costs will start coming out once we start getting into the implementation piece of this. A lot of the costs are still unknown, and there are, yeah, there's just a lot to look at over the next 10 years. The timeline is 30-year timeline, so I think a lot will change over that.
Other questions or comments? All right. Well, Cara, thanks for that presentation. I did not catch what you stole from Maren, but she is a good...
I bet Maren knows.
Yep, excellent. But again, and I can't overemphasize how many meetings, how many people have been involved across all sectors in this process. And we're just, you know, we're getting close to a draft, and once we have that, then we'll really want council feedback as well. And that'll just be to get it to draft for out in the public feedback. But it is, I've had some previews of it, and it is, there's a lot of high-level parts of the plan, but there's a lot of specific things. I think you'll be surprised at how many specific things the committee and the subcommittees have started to explore and start, kind of block out what's possible. But it is going to be an iterative process over, over time. But it'll be much, much more specific, I think, than the plan that it succeeds. Councilmember Wilkerson?
I just want to give a shout out to the volunteers who are serving on this committee. I have an opportunity to sit in from time to time, and this has been truly a committed group of volunteers, many of them experts in their own field around sustainability. So I just want to say thank you for the work that's been going forward, and go get them.
Yeah, thanks. Great point. All right, well, that was a power-packed study session, and we're to the end of it, I believe, for now. And we don't have a council meeting on Monday in recognition of President's Day, but we will be back next Thursday for a study session at 11:00 AM. So everyone have a good weekend, take care, and we're adjourned.